Good evening. I'm going to call to order regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen in Willington. Today is May 4th, 2020 at 6:30 PM. The first item on the agenda after called to order is approval of minutes. John and Liza. Mike, can you unmute John? All right. Okay. So you should each have a copy of the minutes from our April 20th meeting. This is certainly a new forum and I appreciate Robyn's dual efforts between our traditional recording in this video to compile our minutes. So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April 20th as presented.
Seconded.
Seconded by Liza. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor. Signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. The next item is present to speak. If there is anyone present to speak.
We have minutes for April 24th.
Oh, I apologize. I covered them right up. Yes, we have our special meeting on April 20th at 11:30 AM. I'll make a motion to approve those minutes as presented. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Liza. Discussion.
That was April 24th, wasn't it?
Yeah.
That April 20th.
I apologize. April 24th, 2020. If I did. Any other discussion on the April 24th, 2020 minutes? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Humanamist. Thank you. Motion carries. The next item is present to speak. If there is anyone present to speak, I ask that you identify yourself with the record and then remind us all. We need to do that before we speak. Erica Waschinsky for Selectwoman. So our moderator will unmute your line. I'll ask you if you're present to speak to identify yourself for the record.
Hey, I'm gonna hit the unmute everybody.
Is there anyone present to speak? I'll ask a couple more times just in case anyone didn't hear. Is there anyone present to speak? If not, there'll be another opportunity at the end of the meeting. Okay, seeing none. We'll move forward. First selectman status report. We don't have much going on currently. We're a little bit in limbo, but we do still have the finance software. Still planning for that to be in full use beginning July 1st in 2020 and our training is set to begin next week here in the town office building. So our finance staff will be hard at work, training every day for the next several months. The only other project we have currently live to the fuel tank replacement at Public Works Garage. So we anticipate that to begin end of June, beginning of July now. It's been pushed back a little as there's a delay in our vendor being able to obtain everything they need in a typical timely fashion due to COVID and distributors and such, but they still anticipate end of June, beginning of July. And we'll pass along anything else that we information we receive. The last status report is the concrete testing we had done on the senior center, library and pump house. If you recall, we had that done. We're awaiting the results just before all of this COVID happened. We believe we should have reports on that and we hope at our next meeting on Monday, the 18th to be able to give a presentation by the engineer on those results. So hopefully we'll have the beforehand, we'll make them available to the public and talk about them and have any necessary parties available at that meeting. So our planned date is for two weeks from tonight. If that doesn't happen, I'll keep you posted. The next item is item six. Public Works. Troy is Troy Spazato is on the line. So Troy is going to give us an update for Public Works.
All right, we're still doing some roadside mowing. We started grading the dirt roads again. Once the weather doesn't rain every other day. We've been digging out waterways. A contractor installed some new millings at the entrance of River Road Park there due to the project when they replaced the culvert for the state to sign off. We installed plaques at River Road Park and at the town office building for the dedication of the fields. We installed temporary glass in the finance office. We paved patches at center school and did some curb repair around town. We also picked up a couple of truckloads of pallets on Daleville Road that somebody dropped off. And we finished cutting the brush around the park. And that's about it. And I'd like to give a big thanks to a resident that donated a couple of boxes of surgical masks to the Public Works Garage the other day. So thank you for that. And that's all I got.
Thank you. I will mention that Public Erica Waschinsky for Selectmen. I will mention that beginning today. All right, noisy here. Beginning today, our Public Works crew has begun their summer hours. They're here Monday through Thursday. So they're here four longer days and they're not in on Fridays and that will continue until September, Monday, September 14th. If there were any sort of emergency, they would, we would see them on a Friday if something were to happen. Otherwise, you might see them later and not on Fridays. All right. So item seven is new business. Don't have any new business this month. We just so then we'll move to old business, item eight. Even though we didn't have new business, I thought it was important that we still meet. I think it's important. We still need to touch base and keep you up to date on where things are going under this COVID emergency. So as of today, we have six positive cases in Willington with one hospitalization. I don't know the details on the individual, so I continuously reported this one hospitalization. What I'm unaware of is if it's a continuous hospitalization, if this person has remained in the hospital. And so if I had any clarification I could share with you, I will, but I currently am not, I'm not aware. So we've been fortunate. We've been fortunate to have few cases and I want to thank all of our residents for doing their part and adhering to the social distancing guidelines that have been set in place. I think we naturally tend to social distance out here in the quiet corner. But it helps that, you know, everyone's doing their part. So I'm thankful that that we've had so few cases and we have been fortunate in our area that we haven't lost any residents. But we certainly think of those around the state and around the country who have lost their life. So our, our emergency responders, they've been the most affected and those affected haven't been Willington residents. So you haven't seen an uptick in our numbers. So their numbers as of today are that we have four responders that have tested positive and two that have been quarantined due to exposure. I can tell you that they're all doing okay. They have various degrees of symptoms and health issues, but no, we've been fortunate. Again, no major health concerns with them. So keep them in your thoughts as, as they heal and, you know, find their way back to being able to leave home and get back to work. We've had tremendous support from our mutual aid partners, specifically in Stafford, Mansfield, Talent and Yukon. They have been helping to fill the gap with so many of our staff being out. And, and we appreciate their willingness to help under these unusual circumstances. Alex, do you have anything you want to add as far as emergency services?
No, other than, you know, we're still trying to get through this with how quickly we can bring staff back. We're waiting on some tests and hopefully this week we'll start seeing staff starting to come back. We did get one released today and hopefully by the end of the week, most will be back.
Great.
But we can't thank our mutual aid partners enough for all their help.
Thank you. And again, if there's anything that we can do to help. All right, budget process. I've had many inquiries regarding allowing, Wellington allowing residents to vote in some way for the town's budget. So despite some creative voting methods in other municipalities, the governor's office clarified under executive order 7HH that the language in executive order 7I is mandatory and requires the town's legislative body or the board of selectmen where the legislative body is town meeting to authorize its budget making authority to adopt the municipal budget and set the mill rate. Again, just clarifying for, for those of us who were under the understanding that it was a mandatory order. That was the process we were working towards in Willington and still are. And, and so again, despite some creativities in other towns, it's been made clear to us once again that they will honor those that have already happened, but it's, we need to move forward under the process that was set place in executive order 7I. Today, Human Services held a drive up food distribution. I can give a little report unless our Human Services Director who's on the line would like to share. I won't. If you would like to talk about it, Jenny, feel free.
Jenny Arpin, Director of Human Services. This was the first time that we had done a drive up food distribution. Of course, the food pantry had experienced a lot more demand than previously. So this was able to get a lot of people in and get them taken care of at once. And we also used this opportunity to distribute masks to people who needed them as well as brochures that were set forth in such a way where people who had never used any kind of social services would be able to easily navigate and say, okay, I can't pay my rent. So this is what I do. I can't afford my electric bill. So this is what I do. Just trying to take away the, the mystery and the intimidating nature of social services. We had 57 cars. A lot of the cars had multiple households in them, particularly like the seniors would carpool. So we ended up giving out 66 bags. So that means we service 66 families plus I did two deliveries this afternoon. So that's 68 families total that we were able to help today. And we gave out 67 masks. So overall, I think it was a great success. It's the beginning of the month and a lot of families in need would have at this point in the month some of their food stamps or their SNAP benefits available for supplemental grocery use at this point. So I think that if we had another drive through distribution at a later time in the month, I think that we would see higher numbers.
Thank you. Jenny also shared some interesting stats with me today that on average in March, they service 52 clients and/or families and in April, on average, 58. This fiscal year in March, they were able to service 70 clients and 93 in April. So certainly higher than we're used to. And Jenny also reported that a third of the clients for April were new, never been serviced by her department. So certainly we're seeing some impact there. I will tell you today. Myself and a couple of members of Public Works were out there. Jenny had some of her regular food pantry volunteers helping and then just some other members of the community. We saw we had even a couple of high school students out there helping us and the residents that came through were extremely grateful to be able to be helped in any way. So whether it was just a mask or being able to get food, they, they were thankful that there was something here for them. So I want to thank Jenny for putting that together and I know she's already looking for a way to do it again. And it was, it was great despite only seeing this portion of everyone's faces. It was great to see some of our residents that, that we would typically see, but haven't been able to see in some time. So thank you to Jenny and all of her volunteers that made that happen and to Troy and Jason at Public Works who helped with the setup, the breakdown and during that event.
I have a question. Selectwoman Board. Is there a way Jenny for residents to make donations? For, you know, monetary donations specifically?
Absolutely. Yes. Monetary donations, probably the best way would be to write a check and to mail it. Or you could put it in the Dropbox. We have a Dropbox by the door to enter the department. So a resident could do that. If it's for the food pantry specifically, it should indicate food pantry on there.
Okay.
And if someone, Jenny, correct me if I'm wrong, if someone wanted to actually donate food product, that Jenny is handling that by appointment.
That's right. Food. I'm sorry.
Yeah. So I just, I've been directing those directly to her, giving out the department phone number and/or email so they can reach her directly. So, great. All right. And this leads me into our discussion about unemployment. We've talked a little bit about what that impact is in Willington. I apologize. Mike, if I could share my screen. And would like to share a little bit of information with you that we were provided this week. I was pleasantly surprised to get some information. It's not, it's not whole. The first.
You should be able to do it now.
Thank you. Okay. So this first screen was, and this is all public on the Department of Labor's website. Apologize here. Okay. So you can see I've highlighted the numbers for Willington for March 2020. In the information online as well as in the email when it was sent to towns. They made it clear that these, they do not believe wholly represent COVID in these numbers. So as we go across the screen, the first set of numbers is the number, the labor force here in Willington, 37, 39. The number of employed, again, this was for March 2020, it was 36, 17. 122 unemployed for a 3.3% unemployment rate. They've also begun doing some calculations for claims, initially processed claims. And you can see the Willington, I hope you can all see this here. In February 1st, we had one initial claim, February 9th, three, and you can see they jump on March 8th to 11. March 15th to 99, March 22nd to 90. And the data is incomplete, but they've given us some numbers for March 29th, April 5th and April 12. I would anticipate over the next couple of weeks that we receive a little bit more clear information and we'll pass that along. Again, it is all available online as well through the Department of Labor. So I would be surprised if we don't see those numbers go up to at least the 99 that we saw on March 15th. I would expect it to be at least there if not more. It is interesting that it went down between March 15th and March 22nd and they do consider those numbers to be complete. So it gives us a very small indicator of unemployment currently in Willington. And you can see I can scroll this list every town. So you can see the kind of numbers we're looking at depending on the cities down in Fairfield and Norwalk. March 29th, completely incomplete, 1,300 people. In Norwich, you're seeing really large numbers. Those are going to represent casino effect in that area. So this will give us an idea of the unemployment for the state. But specifically each town, which again, I reported to you that we were told we might get your region, we're not going to get you town. I think they heard the outcry from municipal leaders asking for as much data about our own towns as you can give us. And it was important. So keep you up to date on that. In addition to that, we discussed EDC helping gather some information for the selectmen. So they conducted a survey of businesses in Willington. I'm going to stop sharing so that Mike D'Amato, Mike with his other hat, working for CHA, which is formerly CME, is working directly with EDC in this capacity. So they helped out with a survey that they put out and Mike has put together.
Can I ask a question, Erica, before we move to a different topic? Selectwoman Board. So my question is about those numbers on the previous screen. So are those for the number of new applications each week? Or is that the total number of people in the town who are collecting during that week?
They, First Selectman Waschinsky, they were, they're labeled processed initial claims.
Okay. So if there's 99 in one week.
Right.
Those 90, are those unique individual to the 99 or is that?
I believe it's an initial claim for that week. I'm not, I don't have, I don't have complete clarification for that. And when we see that monthly report, like I just showed you, the first one I showed you for March, the April monthly report should give us a better clarification and then the weekly breakdown. So it's still a work in progress for sure.
John Blessington, I'm sorry. Now I'm a little confused here. So when we have 99 in one week, is that 99 initial claims? Which means that the next week it's 90 initial claims in addition to the 99 who had claimed the week before, or is that?
Or that's, that's what it appears to be. Yes. And so I think we should get a better breakdown of the numbers for the entire month to help us understand when they're done with April. So here we are in the first full week of May. So maybe another week or two and we might see some complete numbers for April. Unfortunately, I don't see complete numbers like that as we move into the budget process as the board of finance takes this over. But as we have the data, I will pass it along. We got this on Friday. So we'll pass this along if I get it during the week, certainly between our meetings, we'll pass that along to Board of Finance so they can have access to the most recent data. And it does appear that people are, you know, the money's rolling out. They have certainly, they've really caught up with an incredibly antiquated system where every claim is touched by hand. It's it's unbelievable to imagine that's still the process. They're using a Department of Labor, but they were in the process of using, moving to new technology that takes a couple of years to implement when this all began. So I know they've taken a lot of hits lately, but I think they've really stepped up to meet the needs of those unemployed in a somewhat timely fashion with an old antiquated system. All right. So I think Mike has a document that he put together to discuss the survey the EDC sent out.
Yep. Give me one second.
By the time we go back to normal, we'll have this process down pat.
All right. So hopefully you can all see this. My name is Mike D'Amato. I'm the Town Zoning Agent, but as, as Erica mentioned, we are also helping out the EDC. And so after the Board of Selectmen's meeting two weeks ago, we sort of talked about how we could develop a survey that would give us, you know, an idea as to what was going on in Willington. So we put it together and we blasted it out to basically any contact information that we had for Willington businesses. Which, which frankly, isn't a lot. The, the EDC's list is ever changing. Businesses come and go, people come and go. So unfortunately, the EDC didn't have a list that we could pull the trigger on immediately. So fortunately enough, we were in the process of developing that list. So we had just under 60 businesses that we sent this to and asked them to respond. It was posted on other local business organization Facebook pages, the town's Facebook page. Went the email, it was on the town's website. It was shared pretty much any place we could get it. So we, we wanted to understand how things had changed. That was the goal. It was very informal. We wanted it to be quick. So people would actually take it and not get into a lot of the, the personal details of each one. Based on the respondents, the industries included administrative sort of clerical type functions, bookkeeping, retail, computer programming or software development, engineers, construction, medical and restaurants. Those made up the, the folks that responded. So this is sort of a rough summary. I put this together very quickly. So just, just kind of keep that in the back of your mind. As far as staffing, as you'll see here, 22% of those that responded are, have reduced staff hours. 49% are working as normal and/or from home. 14% have furloughed or laid off some portion of their workforce. So not everybody. 7% have closed and 8% had some other something that they were working on or working with. And that may be, we were just trying to get off the ground when this started. So we're sort of in holding pattern. So those were the, the major categories that we, we saw. Business activity. So as far as what's changed, 15% are closed and waiting to reopen. So they, they do intend to reopen. They haven't just sort of closed their doors and walked away. 40% say that activity, business activity is down more than 50%. 30% say it's down between 0 and 50% and 15% say they are not affected. Economic support, we were asking about what they were doing. 52% have applied for some sort of economic support. That includes those that have, and there are some, I didn't break out the percentage, but some of them have applied and received, but the majority have applied. They didn't indicate that they'd received it as of yet. 35% have not applied for support. And that includes just we've chosen not to, we don't need it, or we feel it's too overwhelming to do on our own. Essentially, then there's again, 13% of folks that, that didn't consider it for a various number of other reasons. Moving forward, 50% of respondents say that the biggest need, their biggest need is for the town to provide support on basically what's, what is available. What programs are out there? How do they apply? And, and they need assistance with the applications. They may have questions or they don't know how to fill them out. So that was what, this was a question that we asked them free text. So that was what was on their mind. And over the next, we asked over the next three to six months, what's your biggest concern? And the majority was sort of focused on getting back to normal ASAP. Whether it's they're working from home or they're, they're sort of trying to keep their head above water type of thing. Obviously, the sooner they get back to normal, the better. So this is, so I haven't really shared this with the EDC yet because I just pulled it together this afternoon. So they haven't decided how they're going to react. We, some, some preliminary thoughts would be trying to set something up so that we can go over with them what's available, a webinar and maybe how to submit an application. We haven't figured that out yet, but this is what we, what we have.
Right. First Selectwoman Waschinsky, thank you, Mike, Liza or John. Any questions, comments?
That's helpful to have some of that information. I mean, obviously we have kind of a small sample size in Willington, but I mean, to the extent possible, I would be interested to see how that, how those answers sort of break out for the categories that you initially identified. So how many of the restaurant type businesses are, you know, I know, again, it's a really small sample in each of these categories, but I would be interested to see because I think that would inform next steps. And I think your idea is really important about having some form of support to fill out applications because you know, we've all had experience with such processes and they are usually never easy or straightforward. And we can all use expertise when it comes to federal aid and applications.
The only, again, Mike D'Amato, the only thing I, I would add, and I didn't include it in there because I did speak with FedEx. I did speak with the person that I, I have as a contact at FedEx. They are, are very regulated at their corporate level on any information that they can share about staffing and business activity. What he did tell me is that they are gangbusters. They are hiring, hiring. That they are gangbusters. They are hiring, hiring, hiring. They are busy, busy, busy. They're in, their business has absolutely increased dramatically. And their biggest need has been and continues to be hiring. So his, his, you know, his ask for the town was. Get me in front of hiring agencies, job fairs, career days, whatever it is, we just need more people. So. The employment numbers and that type of thing is kind of skewed because they're not in there. I think it's probably better because they have, they're such an anomaly when it comes to percentages with. Employees and stuff that it probably would have skewed the data anyways. So I don't have their, their hard numbers, but they are busy.
And again, Mike, I believe, first selectman Waschinsky, I believe you said this at the beginning. You sent out about fifty, surveys to about fifty businesses, correct?
Yeah, we went to about fifty-seven, I think is what we had. We have. A, actually, there are a substantial number of people that in one way or another. Consider themselves to be a business in Wellington, probably more than you might think. They probably, they don't have bricks and mortar, they don't have employees, but they file personal property declarations with the assessor's office. And we use that number and we're trying to come, come to a middle point to get an. But I would imagine we're going to end up in the neighborhood of one fifty to two hundred. As far as someone who may just do taxes online and has a computer and is employed and works out of their, their house all the way to FedEx. But traditionally, I think those at home, maybe one person shops, haven't really been engaged. In the E D C stuff, so we're trying to sort of make them a part of it. And one of the questions we did ask these folks that have responded and that survey is still open. Is, are you willing to participate? Do you want to be involved? What can the E D C do for you? I mean, we asked those questions as well. It just didn't include it in this because it. It wasn't part of what we were talking about, but we're, we're going to continue to build that momentum.
I think one of the reasons why, for me anyway, one of the reasons why I wanted some of this information. It was twofold. One, to understand how this is going to impact. On, you know, the taxes that we're going to collect from these organizations. So maybe those like. Small one person work out of my home office type things is not necessarily. I mean, we want to capture them, but theoretically wouldn't they be, they would show up in unemployment. Because that's the mechanism that we're going to sort of be impacted by those individuals. Whereas, you know, I'm thinking of like our. Not so much Dollar General or FedEx because they're national chains. Again, we'll see those numbers reflected in unemployment. I'm thinking of like Elegant Edge Hair Salon and River and Rail and Wellington Pizza. You know, these businesses that are. You know, mom and pop shops that are, you know, rooted in our community. You know. So to understand what's happening with those communities, I mean, sorry, with those businesses within our community.
Yeah, and, and so I'm not the, I'm not the statistical cruncher to be able to draw all these conclusions from data, but the other. One of the things we did also ask was number of employees and length of time you've been in Wellington. So if we, so if we needed to draw those conclusions, you know, we could probably break it down a little better. But you are correct in that our sample size is small. So really, one person that. Might have felt, listen, you know, I, I'm comfortable right now and I'm just not going to risk it. I'm just going to close. Would skew, you know, they could make that number jump in some cases based on the question, seven or eight percent. So hopefully as we leave it open, we'll get. The results will get, you know, we become more. Stable.
First selectman Waschinsky, Mike, to that point, that data, that additional data will be helpful in how and what we share with them. For instance, a week, week and a half ago, a donation of P P E was made available to the state. And it was. Given out to small businesses. Through the town. So they use the C B I A to get the information out there. And distribute to the towns to get to the businesses who had applied for that P P E. But there was, the caveat was you had to have a small business with fifty or fewer employees. And so they really had to. Had to ask for it themselves, but if the town. Had a database to draw from where we knew, okay, we have these twenty businesses who have fifty or fewer. It's easy for us to be another way to share that information with them. So that they could then have, you know, reached out and taken advantage of that P P E donation. So I, we had one, just one. Set of masks that were distributed to a. To a small business. And I think if we could have helped in a different way to get the information out. Again, one more way to get information to them. Is important. Usually I say less is more. In this case, more is, is better. So that kind of data and the number of employees they have could benefit the way in which we share information with them. Reach them directly. So thank you for pulling that together. As you know, Mike was on our. Our Selectmen's meeting when we last talked about this and we immediately got together and, you know, he said through E D C, we think we can do this and. Richmond Deck and Mike put this together, got this out to get us some, just at least some preliminary information so that we can continue to have conversation. John, do you have any comments, questions?
I. If I read the. That one pie chart correctly, among those whom you've contacted, we have just about. Fifty percent. Who feel they have been negatively. Impacted by this whole. Edition. Did I read that correctly?
Um. So the, we have one pie chart, Mike D'Amato, one pie chart for economic support, which says that fifty-two percent have applied for some. Type of relief. And then there's another one that says that. That the close, the fifty percent or it's forty-nine percent, but they, that is that they are working. Working as normal or from home.
Forty-nine percent are working from normal.
Forty-nine percent, yeah.
Mine gives to me that the other fifty-one percent would feel that they in some way have been negatively impacted by this whole.
Yep. So that would, that would include reducing staff hours, furloughing. Employees, laying off employees or, or closing. That would, that makes up the other forty-two percent. And then there was some. Miscellaneous categories. So yeah.
And that was of about eighteen businesses, correct?
There would be a negative. So, okay, so it's negatively impacted. Thank you. That's.
Yeah. And I think also the other thing to consider, sorry, Selectwoman Borat. Even the forty-nine percent who said they were working from home, that doesn't necessarily, they're working from home to the same capacity. They may be working from home and experiencing far less business. So. I mean, when you're talking about negative impact. I'm not like. Yeah, so. Fifteen, it says fifteen percent say that they're not affected. So I would say even of those forty-nine percent that are working from home. They're likely experiencing reduced business and reduced income. So we're looking at eighty-five percent are affected negatively.
Okay, I'd go along with that too.
In some way, absolutely. Yeah, and first selectman Waschinsky, I think oftentimes, you know, we, we might see a business that seems to be, for instance, some of our restaurants. Who seem to be doing well despite these times, but that's all relative to what we're seeing. Right? Doing well right now may be at fifty percent of their typical capacity. So it's really hard to gauge. So once again. I say to those. Who can to support our small businesses. If you are able, and I recognize that, that, that is not everyone, but if you're able, supporting our small businesses. Is critical to them in this time. Anything else? Mike, thank you very much. I appreciate your assistance and, and that of Richmond Deck and E D C. So look forward to the discussion they'll have there on, on how they can support these businesses. With more information going forward. Alright, I'm hot off the press before, didn't even make it into my. Notes to prepare for this meeting was a letter from the Secretary of State outlining. Voting procedures going forward. So between myself reporting to you and our registrar voters and our town clerk. They've got a lot of information here. That we'll be looking for going forward with elections. So expect to hear news from them. So not just as a. Just because of COVID, but with other issues, they're working on a solid plan to make sure that our elections can still take place. In a safe manner for all. I know one of our registrars is on the line. I won't put her on the spot, but if she'd like to share and say anything. She should be able to unmute herself. Is that correct, Mike?
Yes, Erica, I. I really only just received that very late this afternoon, so.
It's ten pages, so I haven't made it all the way through.
I brought everything home with me so I could take a look at it. We're going to have a conference call with the Secretary tomorrow afternoon. So hopefully she'll be able to review and go over this information for us, but. Again, we want to try to make everything as safe, not only for the voters, but for our poll workers who will be there that day as well. And. Again, we'll, we'll keep you up to date and let you know. What's coming across.
Great, thank you. Yeah, it is certainly a lot to digest. That's all I have for COVID. As the governor works towards his reopen plan. We'll look to see what that means for our office. Right now, we fall into the, if you can still work from home or. Do that. And so we'll see what that means going forward. As we get closer to July, we're certainly going to see an uptick in activity as far as. The tax office and the, I apologize, and the assessor's office. So we're going to need a new plan here in order to work. In, in small spaces and what that's going to look like. So we'll keep you posted as these. As things change. I did read a report this, late this afternoon, that the governor is planning to make decisions about school. Tomorrow. So we'll look to see what that means. And I know the superintendent is looking closely to see what he says there. And. Okay, so unless you have any other questions specifically COVID related. I think Robin does. Mike, can you unmute Robin? It might be easier.
Okay, sorry. Um, did you want to say something about Memorial Day since you're talking about COVID?
It's, it's down in my, I can, I do, I had it in good and welfare, but yes, I can. So. So I, I'm sad to announce. That this year we will not have our traditional Memorial Day parade and gathering on the green. Robin is working with the V F W commander and this decision was made with the V F W commander. So they're, they're working to determine an appropriate way to honor the fallen on Memorial Day. Potentially something virtual. Will be put together and happen, but as it stands, we will not have our parade and gathering on the greens. So it saddens me to say that. When we canceled Wellington Day, Robin and I weren't willing to cancel the parade yet. It means a lot. It, it has a lot of great value, but right now we just need to keep everyone's safety at the forefront. And a large gathering like that would, would not be in the best interest of ourselves or our veterans. Who, who would want to come out. So, so look for detail soon. Like I said, Robin is working with Ed Degada, the current V F W commander. To still find a way to do that. We've had lots of ideas bounce, bounce around. And so we'll keep you posted. Did you have anything else you wanted to say about that, Robin? Okay. Alright. So with nothing else COVID related. Okay. That brings us to present to speak. So once again, I'll ask Mike if he'll unmute all those on. Have joined us for this meeting. And if you would like to speak, I ask that you identify yourself for the record, please. I'll give him one moment to unmute.
I'm going to hit the unmute on my side. Anybody that has muted themselves will have to do the same.
Okay, so you could unmute yourself, identify yourself and speak if you would like. Is there anyone present to speak? No one present to speak? Alright. Okay. Mike, you can mute them all again. We won't put them on the spot any longer. If I could share my screen, I apologize. If I could share my screen one more time, I'll get to, I'll move on to good and welfare.
Yep. You should be able to.
Okay. So I want to thank Maureen Parcella, our Parks and Rec Director and the Parks and Rec Commission. We have, have two beautiful plaques in stone dedicated to two individuals. Because of the COVID emergency, the gatherings planned for these dedications have not taken place. There may be something in the future, so you can look forward to that. But if you're out at River Road Park in the baseball field, you will see a plaque. Here in memory of Douglas Randolph Lerner, who, you know, we've learned was really responsible for bringing Little League to Wellington. And, and so please take the opportunity to.
It always happens.
Can you, can you mute everyone? Thank you. And I'm going to share, I have one more. To share, there is also the field, the baseball field here at the Town Office Building. Is being dedicated to Kevin Legere. Kevin Legere, and it's been, been renamed Kevin Legere Memorial Field. Kevin was a Wellington resident who passed away last year. He dedicated. Many, many years to not just Little League in, in Wellington, but he was a hall school baseball coach. And with the undertaking of a parent and donations from many of his former players. They were able to provide for this plaque and dedication. The dedication ceremony was to take place within these last few weeks. And had to be canceled. Again, they went ahead and put the plaques in place and I want to thank. Maureen and her department and all that, that helped that happen. I anticipate again that there will be a dedication moving forward for both of these items. So thank you. Alright. Also in good and welfare, despite the beautiful weather and the desire to be outside together, we need to continue. To practice social distancing. We're all doing our part and, and must continue so that. You know, we can stay safe at least for the foreseeable future. So I encourage people to get outside, but. Resist the urge to gather in a group and a big party. We received our monthly report this afternoon from Troop C for April. In April, there were a total of three hundred and five calls for service. They include five accidents, seven criminal investigations, one burglary. Three larcenies and two hundred and seventy-four reportable matters. And they totaled nine arrests, arrests in that time. In addition, a motor vehicle enforcement in the month of April. There were nine total traffic stops, two onsite DUIs, zero arrests. Two misdemeanor summons, three infractions, two written warnings and four verbal warnings. I'd like to be curious to compare those to last month. I can tell you those motor vehicle numbers are certainly down. Most of our numbers come off the highway without having a lot of highway traffic. Those numbers are certainly down. I'll take the opportunity again to encourage people to be vigilant in their area. If you see something, say something. If you have an issue that you believe involves a burglary, a theft of any sort, to contact Troop C. They cannot help us if they are not aware. There had, there had been a lot of activity of late. We believe that has been handled and look for more details on that coming soon. So. But, but again, lock your cars, take your personal property out of your vehicles and be very vigilant in these times. I'll remind you that there are a few meetings this week. Region nineteen has a Board of Education meeting tomorrow night at seven. P Z C is also meeting tomorrow night at seven thirty and the Board of Finance is planning to meet on Thursday at seven. They're all virtual. The P Z C and Board of Finance. The PZC and Board of Finance meetings are available online at willingtonct.org. And the Region 19 login for, these are all virtual meetings. The login for their meeting is available on the Region 19 website. I'm going to try to work to see if we can't get that information on our website so that people can have one place to access any meeting that that involves us. So lastly, I want to mention that today is International Firefighters Day and want to take the opportunity to thank members of Wellington, number one, the Fire Department and Wellington Hill Fire Department for their service to Wellington. We appreciate your service on a daily basis, but in the midst of this health, health emergency, we thank you for being on the front lines when we need you. And again, as I mentioned, they really seem to be taking the biggest brunt of this COVID effect from a health perspective in Wellington. So we appreciate you putting yourselves out there every day. And our own Victoria Mott, as you may have seen in NBC 30's Everyday Heroes, was honored for her service with the ambulance service she works for besides Wellington. She was sent out to New York City to work. So she's recently returned back to us. I believe she's in quarantine for a little bit longer after her stay in New York. So thank you to her for that. And with that, I encourage you all to, once again, stay safe and stay home. Liza and John, do you have anything else you would like to add?
No.
Oh.
No, okay. With that, I will move to adjourn at 7:21.
Second.
Seconded by Liza. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright. Meeting adjourned.